Call the meeting to order this, the meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Hampton Board of Health being held in the Townhouse on a Tari of February 7th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology as approved in the Governor's Order of March 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone recording the meeting other than ourselves? Seeing none. We're a little bit more formal this evening. We had our formal picture taken and packages will be available eight by ten suitable for framing for your living room. And a nice set of wallets in six by eights for distribute the family of friends.
Or just see it on the wall post out.
At a low, low price.
Okay, the minutes for January 8th, 2022.
I reviewed them thanks to email that was appropriate.
The only change I saw that needed to happen was, I believe John made the motion for executive session.
I have to tell you sometimes stuff to distinguish.
Yeah. So motion approval is not amended.
Second.
Next item on the agenda is the police department budget. We'll do that first. We'll talk about the policy. So. First question I have is.
One second. That's free sharing, so you're you're going to one drive?
I'm in the one drive. I mean, I got to put it up on the screen, but I can do it.
Comment your law, the same one here.
Oh, wait a minute. That's not, I'm thinking contracts. We're going budgets, aren't we? Okay. Question I have is. Five shifts, overtime and five shifts. That's in the next, go to the next. Okay, it used to be four shifts.
So our officers work a four and two schedule, but fifth shift is what we owe because we pay for contract obligation is 40 hours per week our officers can. Our officers work four on and two on. Every week they get a fifth shift that we have to pay, that the town has to pay. That's where you come with the fifth shift.
But I guess what I'm asking, wasn't it just before before?
No, it's always been a contractual forty. We broke out this new model this year to kind of, you might not recognize it before the other model, the previous sheet views. But this is a new sheet that we use to kind of explain it better and see more possibly. And it's always been our contracts over there four days and two days, four days on, two days off, with a fifth shift being taking forty hours, which is forty hours per week that he jobs for dance. You might not have seen that before.
But we could just talk.
Yeah.
You're talking about the contractual five shifts for 52 weeks, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What was that? What is this OT? Is it overtime?
Where are you seeing hourly rate?
I'm looking, I'm looking at the sheet that says.
Should be the first sheet of our general salaries, I think, right?
She didn't think the sheet that said general salaries.
Right.
Okay, and then so it says contractual OT, five shifts for 52 weeks.
Well, technically it is considered an overtime shift because it's above and beyond the four, four days to get you 40 hours.
So do they get time and a half for that or?
So their hourly rate is going to be to 5994 for that particular shift with everything equaled into for the new contractual. So now they're not getting extra and they're getting a certain rate for that shift.
Which copy are you looking at? Because I have a discrepancy between this printed copy and our agenda.
There's a newer, there's a newer version. On the OneDrive.
Why was there a newer version?
I don't know. Chief, you had the earlier version where let's say the general salaries were like 1,157. Now it's 1,160.
No, 651.
I think the first initial one came right out and the next one came to pain right out. What did you? It was only on the advisory page. It would have shown when it was error, when it was calculated, but the actual rest of the budget when it was all sent was calculated, was miscalculated on the advisory sheet.
The one that I have here is the most recent. I have three cop, three budgets. One was January 12th, I think, one was January 24th and this one.
Well, this one initially came, this budget sheet, the advisory came originally, we reset it again, so you have the most updated data. So I may be confused if I send it again today, but everything was put in the first, first date with the exception of the calculations on the advisory sheet. Was done wrong and we reset it over that day when the budget had to be ended. And I went ahead and had Kathy send it over again today. So that's maybe why it looks like.
So what's the total number, district?
So it's going to be 165.
165. So what's printed? Yeah, that's why I was saying we were noticing a printed copy and what we had online was different.
Okay.
Behind stuff.
1654.
It's in your.
No, I'm asking on the OneDrive. Is there a total total page or because I only see dropping down. I don't see all these pages.
If you click on the advisory tab on the bottom.
Yeah. That should be the first page.
Yeah.
So I'm showing 1641. Is that current or no?
No, it's the 1654 in the agenda.
So why doesn't Bob have a copy of the new one up on the one drive?
I have. Yes, up.
I'm on the OneDrive now.
Hey. He said, he said, we have three copies, three different copies of the police budget that are on the OneDrive.
Yes.
The one that I put up there was the January 24th, I think. This is the newest version. And it matches what Pam copied.
It's gotta be 27. It says 27.
And there's, see, see, the highlighted in blue is the one that I have up. That's the most recent. That's the January 24th version. At the top, there's a January 12th version. See the one, this is the 12th.
Yeah, the 12th one there. What's the other one called?
It's the 124 version. Yeah. We don't have. So 1654.
Again, what are you showing? I'm showing JPEG of the budget. I don't see a PDF. Somebody scanned it as.
Well, some, some of the information was scanned and differently than the way we would want to do it.
Chief, you keep, when you generate the budget, is it in Excel sheet or Word document?
Yes, that's.
So you typically email that to Bob?
So that was emailed through law to Bob, correct?
As a email, as a still as an Excel sheet, not a PDF or anything like that.
That was the exception.
So he could look in his mail and sort or save that as, save that. Well, what was the difference between the first and last one, basically, the extra money? Because I got one on the 12th. That's an actual thing I can edit. And I got a picture of just the first page of this latest one.
The general salaries were from 1,157 to 1,160.
The extra $3,000 between the budget on 12th and the budget on the.
The one on the 12th has a budget line, bottom line. Of. 1 million, no, no, 130,000 for general expenses. And the one that was on the 12th is 119. Also, in line number two, general salaries, it's 1,160. In this final version and the other version was 1,157.
Chief, why is there a big jump in town meeting and elections?
That's going to be the state elections. So I wanted to see the election.
Chief, here's my big question. Last year's budget prior to, you know, we worked on the dispatch thing was 1.656. That was the requested before we went to town meeting. All right. Instead, we're going to have a heck of a savings. And now, correct if I'm wrong, right, maybe I lost it off the thing here. What's the bottom line number on this?
So we are.
1654.
Correct.
So all our savings from dispatch have gone.
So a good portion of the budget increase is our contractual obligation with the contract that we signed with our, as in in the front sheet that I submitted, should be a cover sheet between our raises, the sergeant's site and the technology, the shift differential increases, supervisors, and the extra 40 hours that we're going to be going to the full-time officers for overtime, extra days off, increasing a good portion of that budget to get up there. And then I'm looking to add another additional full-time officer, which is going to be another increase to the fact as I had said in, in September, December, with our reserve force and our reserve force falling off and the need to use a reserve, reserve force, we're going to need to have a full-time officer placed on, most likely this year and next year. We're going to end up going from 12 part-time officers to approximately three part-time officers that are in work on a regular basis. So as with police reform in trying to bring up the level of officer, police officer across the board, we're losing our part numbers along across the state. So I was adding a additional police officer.
Right. But if my math is right, our general salary budget went up 40%.
Correct.
40%.
And in this also, in this budget.
40% rate.
No, you know, we understand. In this budget, we've calculated, in this budget, we've calculated for their days off such as comp days. Now, comp days can be utilized, can be built up, and I have to go ahead and it's almost like a guess at it. When my officer takes a day off, I could be paying a level of certain rate here, or I could be paying a certain rate here. So I could have a sergeant at time and a half rate on a special week that he's making a certain amount of money here. I could have a reserve. So I had to compensate within this budget for giving these officers the days off. Then I've added training. I've actually added more training because with our police reform in police standards and expectations, there are certain guidelines to that one level officer that they want across the board. Our officers need to be trained on everybody across the state to be able to count across the state. So I've increased the budget in the training. I've asked for a cruiser in this particular budget. I've asked for, we had talked about the tasers. I put the tasers in this particular budget with an expectation I might not look to get tasers for 13 officers.
Under what? Where are the tasers? So it's all we have is the cover sheet. We don't have the inside sheet. Is that under general expenses or under?
So the tasers would have fell under the general expenses, right?
Not new, not under equipment?
No, we would date it under the general, general expenses. And then I'd actually look to have an SRO program, School Resource Program instituted where we would have that officer go over 16 hours a week into the schools between Thornton Burgess and whatever's over at, I mean, Green Meadows and whatever's over at Thornton Burgess, and having that officers shift cover. I looked to add the RAD program, which is a program for rape progression and defense for classes for women to be trained. So there's, so this budget does reflect all those increases that it's looking to to bring about. And those are, those, those will be explained in the pages afterwards from the general salaries down through.
I suggest to the board, this is ambitious, what he's talking about here.
Yeah.
However, I feel uneasy wiping out our entire savings in one year. I'd like to have an opportunity. I think we should discuss this with the chief. They applaud him for being proactive, but I think we can't eat the entire apple at one time. I'd like to see a better breakdown for all these different programs, how it impacts this budget.
No, give me a shot. And you've got school resource officer, right?
You're on the second page, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. 24,930. Is this, that's not the school resource officer that were built separately, right?
No, we don't, we don't do that in our school. You're right, Chuck. We don't. The money that we get built to Danny and our school resource for the high school has nothing to do with our.
This, so this 24,000 is a new person.
Correct. Well, we have the person that's trained already, but to put them in the school at 16 hours would be, yes, it was a new person.
So similar to what Billy used to do is there.
Correct. Right. Then Dan went to school resource.
Right. Any chance of using an auxiliary officer or something like that?
So the auxiliary program is going to basically fall off with the police reform. It's another fortuitous, fortunateness towards agencies. So the auxiliary program is going to fall off. A reserve officer, I could hope to get a reserve officer to cover the problem I run into. First right of refusal goes to my full-time officer. So that office, there are full-time officers have a right to work at, as overtime shift future that comes into play.
Right. Well, and then I want to go back to the contractual, excuse me, I want to go back to the contractual OT. Right? So it's five shifts. There used to be four shifts, right?
So, so five shifts makes up their 40 hours.
Well, what did we do before? How did they get to 40 hours before?
Same, same. It's, it's, it just wasn't spelled out the way it is spelled out here in this model that I have. I mean, it was there. It's in the model, but I don't think it came out this way. It's always been that way. As long as I've worked over there. I mean, I can pull my life line.
Yeah, it's, it's the contractual rate that the officers receive was automatically in the number that was used prior every year for their hourly rates. So that when you calculated it on the old way we used to do it, it was already in there. So you broke it out and showed.
So what we did is in this one here, I thought it would be easier for me to explain it to the board as breaking it up this way. Now we know. Transparency, yes.
So chief, you're going to have three bridged office, reserve officers in fiscal 23?
Hopefully, I'll have two going through right now. I have two going through right now. By June 30th, there'll be bridge. The next group that comes into play, we haven't actually asked if any of them want to go yet. And then the last tier, there was another expected one. That's definitely assuredly. I could end up with only three over the next three years altogether. So I could be down to three part-time officers.
Brings me back to in the 1,160, whatever it is, 1,160. Is that an additional full-time officer there?
Yes.
So we've got, we've got an additional full-time officer there. And you got the resource person, which is new too. Right?
Correct.
Under cruisers and maintenance, how come the 19 Tahos are $1,000 for breaks and the 21 Tahoe, the older vehicles are only $450, $300? Is that partial of vehicles more expensive?
The 2021 hasn't had a break job on it. The 19 had that break job. That was the actual cost at that point in time.
I really would like to see the individual breakdown of these suggested new programs. I think, you know, it's kind of a, the chief, his job is to bring these things forward and suggest them. It's our job to consider them and figure out what we can take on this time. But I think at this point, with this type of information, we really don't have enough to make that considered decision. I think it's kind of more of a one-on-one to the chief. And then really get, get the right file up on the server so we can look at it. Coming in with ideas.
Yeah.
Again, you know, we can't blow the whole savings in one year.
Understand we so. Just knowing the police reform and the way it's going with their, under certain mandates we are.
Just out of curiosity, I'm just looking at another page here for general expenses. What tower are we leasing?
So we leased the tower on the end of Commercial Drive National. We leased the tower up here at the transfer station. And then.
Those are owned by who? Excuse me. Those are owned by who?
This one's Horizon. That one is owned by Turner that owns the.
We're leasing the transfer station.
Don't we own that one? I'm just curious.
What, what is the lease charge? If we're paying a lease charge at the transfer station, I'd like to know what it is. I didn't think so.
It's too random.
So that would just be the SBA.
Sorry. I want to know if it was split or.
No, just the SBA. That is the one that's off on Summer Grove.
Alphapod, Canelo. Then you got.
Yeah.
Tuesday next week?
Valentine's Day, no?
No, then with Monday, Monday. Although in your wife's mind, it might be.
Forget it.
Sorry.
So Monday next week, chief? Valentine's Day.
All right. I think he's hinting that he can't make the Valentine's Day.
Every day is Valentine's Day at our house.
You got me.
Does she watch this?
No, she wants nothing to do with this. The facial recognition policy. While we have you.
Yes. So under police reform, essentially the new law implements a use of facial recognition where police execute a court order based specific and articulate facts or reasonable inferences for reasonable grounds that would result with irrelevant material on the criminal investigation. Basically, what has happened is if we were to use technology through the registry board vehicles or through the state police, we are now asked to, or we are told by law through the state court order, and we have to go to that street and get the court order for us to search the technology. So these, this policy that's before you is basically what's come out through the state from the history report that all police agencies in Massachusetts are expected to.
What if you don't endorse it?
It's the state law.
What about the towns, the communities that have banned it in Massachusetts?
What about the communities that have banned it?
Yeah.
I'm sure there'll be a lawsuit and we'll see where it goes. I don't think anything under police reform is a challenge yet. It could be many as we move forward, but that's a stance.
Because there's some pretty big communities that banned it. Springfield, Worcester, East Hampton, Northampton.
Okay, I haven't, I haven't noted that. I know what's coming out through the Mass Chiefs that we follow and through the commission. Each leg of the police reform has a commission that follows through, such as the body cameras, such as the facial recognition. And that's what is expected that the agencies have done and follow the play. If you don't follow when we go into search technology or do a comparison and don't get the court order.
Has the commission for facial recognition convened you?
Have they convened?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, but they haven't come up with a conclusion, right?
This is, this is what we've come up with. This is what they come up with. I just got this. That's why I put up to.
I'm just going back to a Mass Live article in January. They said they haven't.
Yeah, so that's, so that's, that's, that's mass line and mass live in the media sometimes. What just came out through the commission, it was filed. I did see that article. I think that's why this came out like relatively soon after, because the commission was supposed to have it in July.
Right. And they're supposed to have the, the deadline date was the end of last year, right?
Yes, with a lot of unfortunately for.
Now, what about the cases where facial recognition, it gives false positives? Because I have concerns about that and especially with the National Institute's technology and standards, you know, they're, they admit that there's false positives. They exist, especially among some demographics.
I mean, you look at like the breathalyzer too and the OAT and all the problems with the OAT and the problems with that too. They can, there's going to be evidence going to come out with, with each of them. And there's going to be something proven with a facial recognition technology. I can tell you right up front that this isn't something that we do.
Right. And I understand that, you know, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time because.
No, I understand what you're following and what you're seeing out there. But as the commission has prompted under the state law, this is what we are to follow through and accept and move forward. There may be something on the road under, under the false pretenses that you're talking about.
Right. Yeah.
Show something. I don't know if that's something why we wanted not to, not adopt it.
Yeah, I, I mean, at this point in time, I have a hard time wanting to personally adopt it. I don't agree with it on the state level, even the legislature that Baker has put out there. I don't agree with it. So.
I mean, I can find out what, what, if any, issues we're going to face as a duty on adopting.
Yeah, like I said, there's a lot of other large communities that have banned.
And I wasn't prepared to do that.
Yeah, Springfield, East Hampton, Northampton, Worcester, Brookline, Cambridge, Somerville and Boston.
They're not accepting the policy.
They banned it. They banned the use of facial recognition technology.
Well, I just want to say, I think you're getting confused. Technology, we don't have the technology.
Right. So they banned the use of it within their town. So and it ended this, you know, the, the the use for evidence investigation, evidence gathering, biometric scanning, biometric devices, you know, all the stuff that was listed in the policy presented.
So that's meaning that they have that technology and they're no longer going to use it in that community or they could have.
Well, the case for East Hampton, they don't have that technology, but they don't want to use it going forward.
Right. And we don't use it. It's just a generalized policy that's come out through the state to adopt each agency if you were to go ahead and use it somewhere.
No, I understand, you know, just covering your butt, but I, I think signing it opens the door to a lot of adverse outcomes, you know. I'm, I'm concerned about it. I'm, I'm concerned about it. You know, the, the false positives, you know, the lawsuits that happen in Connecticut with it.
So, I'm not sure if you're understanding the policy totally, but maybe.
No, I read the whole policy, yeah.
Well, then fine. Again, we're not under a gun to.
Right.
If Craig would like to research this, maybe a conversation with the chief. Sure, let's put it off.
We could, I mean, I'm, I'm not comfortable with it either way. I mean, I've researched it in depth, so.
Let's put it off then.
You need it now, yeah?
No.
And I'm not trying to give you guys a hard time, you know, I just, it's not something ethically I believe in.
All right, I guess we beat you up with that.
I guess the radio's still at seven, right?
Oh, yeah. Radio, the radio.
Did you want to talk about that now?
Yeah, sure. I think Tony was coming on too to talk about that, just.
Yeah, no. I know, I think he had executive session. I'm not sure he was going to try to get off of that.
All right, well.
I mean, ultimately, I didn't.
I, I suggested based on the other meeting, you know, honestly, Don and I, you and I, we defer to Craig. Craig knows more about this stuff than I do.
What's the issue?
So, so I, I don't know. I guess all I had asked at the department head meeting, uh, was to ask Mark. If the vendor that they're using is Goose Town, which what we're having uses, um, because we're currently using Marcus.
Right.
But I don't have an issue right now. We're still finishing up with Marcus the way we're supposed to be doing it. We just did another testing up Thursday with the private partner for the last entire leg of tile testing. And we're pretty much, um, going to look to do a sit-down in, in Craig or, or one of you gentlemen, one of the representatives to sit down with Marcus, absolutely. Um, and come together. I think the radios and the digital that they put in is, is, is working. We have some maybe little concern as you go up and over the top of South Road.
Yeah.
What do we do? How do we correct that problem?
I think that was something that when they first did the, the thing that was.
Well, yeah, but you identified, like, you had dead spots, always did. And in this thing, you had fewer dead spots, but you were always going to have them, try to minimize them. And I think, and you mentioned before, I think it was during the emergency meeting. That concern was more like keeping Marcus people in the loop as well, because they're out in a snowstorm. What's happening? And if it becomes some, some kind of consensus and report back to the board, where are we right now?
Right.
Don, you were concerned before, like, what was happening, Marcus? Why are they so slow getting done?
Yeah.
Have we put this to bed? Is everything ready? Or what's your target going for?
So what's, what's happened unfortunately between COVID and everything going on and, and they work for Hampden and they work for others. Well, we ran into a problem where we left a channel inside our radio along the analog. And it was going up against our digital and we started to have a lot more dead spots. They found that problem in the community, could have rectified the problem a year. And, and now it seems very clear.
So, do we still have the three transmitter sites? That's it, right?
Right. So you, but could you communicate with the highway people?
No.
They could never could before then.
So.
But you never could before, right?
It's a different, it was UHF.
There you go. And I'm not a big radio person, but I'm along the lines of, of the UHF, DHF, you're in the community. Now, fire department's analog, the police department's a digital. And this might be a time for me and Craig to come together and break something back to the board, later on down the road. Because we could get very confusing, uh, a system that we bought. We bought digital registers, police department, fire department, state analog. I mean, we enhanced, um, the directness of the, uh, of the line of sight.
Yeah, the, the digital just offers the clarity.
Excuse me.
The digital offers the clarity, the P twenty-five offers the encryption.
And we'll say, just for further muddy the waters. Had a conversation with Sandra from PDTA and they are interested in doing some upgrade to that tower. And I think it's an opportunity for the town, possibly with some of our monies that Mark keeps pulling away from Washington. Thank you, Bob, for all your efforts. But again, that, if you had that tower in your arsenal, that really gives you a lot of coverage, right? Back to the Wall Black Tower. That was always our premium spot in terms of getting coverage.
Technically, it's still licensed to the town of Hampden.
It's just.
Under, under the police frequency, so you could, could theoretically put a transmitter up there.
I think we'd have to go back, yeah. Yeah, and that's, that's when we get into the sit-down with Marcus and kind of come up and see exactly where we want to go.
But you may be able to partner up with PDTA, because they're like interested in keeping that going as well. They assume some of the responsibility.
Why, why is, why is the police department digital and the fire department analog? I thought Marcus was going to take care of that.
That.
What was that?
The.
Why is the fire department analog and the police department digital?
I think because the fire department relies on a lot of outside resources and most of them are still analog. And it's easier to. Communicate and program analog and without going to the expensive route of digital and P twenty-five systems, which is substantial increase.
If there's a fire. Can you talk to them?
Through a, uh, UHF, uh, DHF radio.
Right. You have the, you, you can.
They have tri-band radios.
Well, we have the tri-band radio.
So you would just.
Which we can, we can talk to on our channel.
Didn't Tony say one time he would try and get a grant to help out some of our other, and bring him all?
That's what I was. But the whole topic that came up in the meeting was when you were talking with Mark about the radios he was using through Goose Town. And I, I think I, I was confused maybe that you mentioned switching to Marcus for the, for those radios, right?
So, so all I was asking is who the vendors, because I currently am using Marcus.
Right, yeah. I think. From what I, I gathered, Goose Town is the one that's providing those radios, but they're covered under a grant through the rec.
So, so my understanding is it's a state bid, which could be Goose Town, it could be Marcus, it could be, I think that's what Tony was going to come on tonight to explain that. It says it's a state bid, it could be any vendor.
Right, but Webberham, I guess, is contracted, uses Goose Town, and he was able to get these radios through that at a discount. And then get the grant bid to cover that.
Okay.
So if, 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 they're not going to change who they use. So from what I gather, if, if we wanted to go with Marcus, we'd be unhooked for a pay for him then.
And I wasn't looking for him until I was just asking a generous question.
Yeah, I, I just want to.
So I think you're going to miss. Guy a little bit, even what I might be said about Goose Town and Marcus. I wasn't looking for Marcus and Jeff Marcus, that's we heard.
Right.
And we have a vendor in our town.
But going back to our question, when are we all done? When is everybody talking to each other? Is this something you can quickly concise back and?
You know, we're very close, very close to being all done. We just did that last leg of testing up at the fire department. The next thing is I want to sit down with a representative from the board of selectmen, myself, Marcus, fire, uh, whoever else. High rate, and we, and we put it to rest. We still owe. A little bit of money, not, not a lot, and then for everything that's in waste, and then we just got to come up with, like you said, do we, are we satisfied with what we have a dead spot?
It's the same concern I have. I think that, now it's all sudden the PBW truck goes off on Stafford Road. Does, is he able to communicate with the police and tell them that I've got problems?
Right.
You know.
Yeah, that's what I want.
And through our radios, we can, because we are a tri-rail.
And I think that's the instance where they reach dispatch and then dispatch relays all information.
This may be, hopefully it's not beyond what you can do. I'd like to see a previous dead spot map and a current dead spot map. And then if there's down the road, you said, look, Marcus says we put two repeaters in, we hear, just give us a, a map, if you will. Maybe there's something.
Cause I remember before you were saying Main Street was, was pretty bad. Has that been rectified?
Absolutely, uh, uh, the majority of the towns, except for like coming up on the top, in, in our geography, really, it's never been.
Well, those are the three transmitters and you drop off the backside.
I mean, we're not, you know, you could put a tower here and then drop off this side and not, you know, so we could.
I always wonder why the repeater thing, Don, remember when the Horizon came up, they talked about putting those things on four fives or showing them? Why aren't they doing that type of thing?
It's probably to make it.
They're using microwave links instead of repeaters.
I mean, that's not a thing that.
Yeah, microwave's direct, so it creates a triangle, the way they're using their systems now, repeaters, take the signal.
Is phenomenal from previous radio that you have. It's definitely.
Digital far upgrade.
Yes.
Maybe we should just lower that hill.
Mark, first mark.
All right.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we go with them chatting with, uh, Craig and come back with?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're, yeah.
You know, that's the digital analog.
I have my license.
Okay, building department budget, it's going to go well. I don't have an electronic copy. It has been requested and it will.
Today. I did not scan it on Thursday, so you didn't receive until today. I didn't put it on one drive. I'll do that. Tomorrow.
Huge increase, Wendell. Oh my gosh. So basically you've got the goal in your budget and that's it.
Dick isn't paying for it.
Okay, so I should have put in for him last term. But this is the first year out of the Collins report, so we're all kind of, you know, and then with regards to. It's going to take a while for me to catch up with the chart, I guess. So I'm just giving focus for the next twenty years or so.
Yeah.
Your question about the, uh. No, no, you've got it broken down. Six seventeen represents.
It's the figure that's always been in there, pays for myself alone, goes through the fire.
So probably that's the discounted rate that we get for the state through King.
Right.
Goes to the fire department?
Well, it's part of their plan or their package, I believe.
That's why I remember last week, Mark, we should be able to get that.
Shouldn't your title be changed? You're one notch up from building inspector. Are you done? You're a building commissioner.
It takes me to run the community.
Yes.
But actually, you know. I'm not so on labels that it bothers me, I don't, you know.
Well, this would make it accurate though.
Recognized for it.
It would be accurate to, to have building commissioner.
Commissioner?
Yeah, yeah, and it's on my, you know, on my emails and all the stuff that I was signed normally. Um, it's a title I've earned. I passed eight tests, took them fourteen or fifteen times maybe. But part of that also, the expense portion of it is continuing education that I get. It's mandated, I get like forty-five hours every three years. I usually end up with about. Wow. Well, last year, last year, the building department was able to pay for itself.
Yeah, I was going to say, so revenue wise, you're still.
This year also looks really well, because a lot of that was a solar farm or a large project. And we seem to keep having those, you know, on the horizon. The Ameresco one will be starting, I believe, I spoke with the gentleman last week and they're planning on going into the third or fourth quarter of this year. To get started with that, they were calling the preliminary permitting information. It's basically the same size as the Burego, I think. And they just started that actually. Physically working on that. They've got all the.
You think the, um, home repairs are going to keep up? This year coming up?
Well, if it's any indication from all the guys that I know in the trades, they're all booked until the end of the year.
Perfect, so that.
The biggest hindrance is materials.
Yeah.
You know, a roll of fourteen-two wire used to be thirty bucks.
Yeah.
Now it's a hundred and twenty. Lumber's coming down, but you know, it never comes down the whole way. So, and there's always a great excuse. There's always a wildfire, tornado, you know, petroleum.
Heard beavers cutting down trees.
You didn't have water behind your house today, so I checked on.
Wow.
No beavers, but I'm here.
It blows free, it comes right into the backyard.
That's my indicator of I water in Hampden.
I was saying last week, I, when it gets to the kid's swing set, I know that they're the. I just look out the kitchen window, it's at the kid's swing set.
There was a lot of pumps on Friday.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? Very good cash cow department.
Yeah, sustain the sector.
We'll try, you know, when there's somebody there and it's a lot easier, because people Lance working and Wilbraham during the day and living in Hampden. It was still kind of Wild West. And now everybody comes in and gets permits. It's great, you know.
So are we going to change the title?
What's your ID? Did you read that? Your ID say commissioner?
Appreciate it.
Does your ID say commissioner? Your ID, your badge says commissioner?
Call me commissioner.
Commission.
Okay. It sounds all right.
Reward and budget and contract. Need that for a budget. That on here?
No, I don't have it.
So put on screen.
Oh, there it is. It's not on the one drive?
It is on the one drive.
You got the hundred thousand.
They're out today, right?
Yeah.
Doing work on.
So that new firm, they're in town working already?
Yeah.
How's the response then? Are they, obviously they're busy in other communities as well or?
Yeah, they're, uh, they're putting us ahead of everybody, because I, first come, first served, so as long as the money's there, they're trying to grab it. So, yeah, it's been, been real busy.
Pretty, not easy, but you, you've had a good selection to choose from. You're not waiting too much and.
No, we got the four guys. If I was to pick them, I would have picked them all, but Lyndon. But Lyndon does a fine job. There's no doubt about it.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm happy with the work.
How's the utility? You know, they're, they're, they're staying ahead of it or?
No, you mean National Grid?
Yeah.
They're not, they're not doing a lot. They got a real poor budget for it. I did get true ten trees out of them last year that were, that were the, the trees.
They're required to clean stuff, right? Clear stuff? Within power lines?
Well, it's, it's up to them if they want to clear it or not, or if they want to risk the power outage. So they prioritize based on their reporting, uh, you know, the more residents out of service, the poorer reporter they get. So if you had a private tree that put hospital at jeopardy, those are residents. That tree, they pay enormous amounts of money to take down a tree in your yard for threatening their power lines. But then it gets back to how many people are on the circuit? How many people are they going to lose if the power goes out in that street, so side streets, forget it. Dead end streets, forget it, you know, the Hendricks Loop is.
Yeah.
Is important to them. That's why they took down that private tree on Main Street. They took down one now. They've done a few for us, so.
You know, they prioritized the three, the three-phase line, you know, obviously keeping that clear as possible.
So we get something out of it. It's not a lot. But whatever you get, I mean, I call them and, you know, the arborist is a good enough guy who always comes out and looks at it, but he's like, you know, I got a lot of territory. Yeah, so, but he helps, he helps.
We have a relationship as well.
Right, and they go through them quite, quite quickly too. Yeah, this is like the fourth arborist in the last four or five years. That they're flipping them all the time. He was here for years, he's gone.
Where do they go?
They either move them up or out, uh, to another company. They might take some, you know, a job that never sort of has a. Arborist has a lot of, a lot of money in their budget, so because people and customers like Leno, they have, uh, I talked to the tree worker up there, they've got. A lot of work out of their power companies, whereas, you know, we don't get as much, but, so anyway.
So. What do you want to do about your contract that you didn't, that you thought you didn't have?
Well, it's news to me. I guess I'm under contract and they never knew it and I never got a copy.
You gave it. You gave it to sign.
Which did not, it is, you know, you do what's in it regardless. Doesn't contain a whole lot that you can duck. So, yeah, so I've got it, what I want to do about it. I don't care if I have a contract or not, to be honest with you, it's up to you guys if you want me to have one, if you don't, I have no problem not having one. It doesn't provide for a lot, as a matter of fact, what it did provide for, for license reimbursements and stuff, after I got it, I read through it. I didn't even put in for them, so I probably lost a couple hundred bucks in license renewals fees that I could have put in for, but that's what are the, yeah, so.
So what do you want to do? You want one, or you want to just go?
It doesn't matter, whatever you guys want to do, I mean, it doesn't bother me to have one. It doesn't, I mean, I didn't think I had one for three years, so it doesn't bother me to not have one, you know, so that doesn't matter. What I do. Want to talk about a little bit as far as what would I want in my contract, I don't know what you're offering for pay raises, so when I threw this together, it's a simple little budget. I don't know what I put in, I tried to round it off, because I don't pay myself once. So to try to come up with something change is kind of ridiculous for the treasure and everything else, so I rounded it off. I don't think, you know. I don't think it's as much as I would like to add, I mean, in reality, I don't have to tell you, I'm sure you know, but the workload for the last three years is tripled.
No.
I mean, you're generally talking about having forty-five thousand a year for tree removals, which is what the, you know, the. Heaviest lifting part is of the job is marking them, and it takes a lot more time than you would, than you would think, and I've documented it all. One of the reasons why I do this, I put in for my mileage now, but, so that's one of the issues, is the mileage, because. I was gonna take out the two worst days, because of course I'm not gonna present you with the best days, the best days would be when I traveled to Sturbridge to go to that three-day seminar there. I drove each day, well, we've got mileage for that, that's fine, because that's, you know, a fair amount, fifty-four cents a mile, that's fifty-five and a half or fifty-four and a half. That's what Dick pays me, I looked it up and it's actually more than that, but, two or three cents more doesn't make any difference, so why even talk about it? But, in the worst days, like when I marked the trees on Chapeau Road, it took me seven hours one day to do it. Now you gotta understand that I'm driving up, doing an initial scan looking for the bad trees, and that first, you know, foliage time of the year, they can tell which ones are dead. Then you go back, I log them in on a spreadsheet like this, which you've seen them before. Then I go back, I check it, double-check, and there's always mistakes, you know, and then trying to get an exact location is tough, if you had a GPS, you could say, okay, this tree here is at this and this, you'd know right where it is. So I figured out the best way to do it, I don't bother you with it, but I got a good way of locating the trees exactly where they are. So back and forth on Chapeau Road I go, this and that, at the end of the day, I look and I put seventeen miles on the car, and the car ran for seven hours. You can't shut it off every time, I mean, if I was sitting in your shoes, I'd be saying to me, we'll shut the car off if you're not using it. But you, you get out of it, you're gonna walk down the road, you know, maybe fifty, sixty feet, then you see another tree, you walk another fifty, sixty feet. Then you gotta walk around the back of it, if you're not covered with poison ivy, you're looking for holes in the back of the tree, which ones are the worst ones? Takes a lot of time to do it, the car's running the whole time. Today, I was five hours on with a car and I put twelve miles on it. You gotta pick up somebody from the tree company, I took Mendez and we ran Thrasher Southones and Northones, and I took Wallace up Chapeau. Mendez was on north, they did the tree across from your house today. So blah, 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 I mean, it's a lot, and I don't know how you can do it, you can't, I can't. Realistically ask you for an hourly reimbursement on the car, because then you're putting your faith in me, then I'm gonna tell you the truth. I mean, not that I wouldn't, but you're gonna be putting, so if I was you, I wouldn't agree to that. I don't know if it's possible to get some kind of stipend just for using the car, I'll tell you one other thing is that. I don't know how many flat tires you guys have gotten, but think about it, if you, you know, you're driving normally out of the road, you're gonna get a flat tire once in a while, and the last, since. The beginning of December, I've got two flat tires, right rear, left rear, and that's from, I believe it's from pulling off the road when I get to the tree crews, you know, I got my lights on in my car. But I'm trying to get off to let traffic by, especially if we're not using a police detail, you know, so I'm trying to set up a safety zone for the crews. And I get off and I think undoubtedly I'm picking up hardware off the shoulders of the road, I ended up having foreign tires put on my car, now you're not gonna pay for that, I wouldn't ask you for it, but.
Probably all on the same side.
Yeah, all on the same side, right?
Um, I think, some point, if I can jump in Dana.
Yeah.
Probably what we missed, Don, last time when we hit the hundred thousand, is the fact that that had extra work for the tree ward. If we look at this normal annual salary, which Dana I think said before, in an average year, forty to sixty dead trees, something like that.
Correct.
And then all of a sudden we jump on, we're doing two hundred, we should have, I think, realized that there was extra hours, some of that money probably should have gone to. Maybe it could work, it will, and I think that's probably what we missed our, in there, now that we haven't.
It's gonna drop though, too.
Oh, I know it is, that's what I'm saying, like, I wouldn't do it on a thing, but out of, when we get. Money like that, some is for trees, some is for office work, if you will, basically, that's what you're doing, no, that's what you're doing.
It's an awful lot.
You know, if the clerical involved in just the.
Never mind, you know, as I could think about it through the course of the night, when you're thinking about the crews coming in at seven, and which is the fastest way to get them around, show them what's going on. I mean, you can't quantify it as hours work, but you can certainly figure out, you know, you all worry about your jobs at night, I'm sure, and those are actually hours you're working, you're thinking about it. But whatever, that's, that's what it is, I thought about the increase in, in hours over the last three years, and. Even though I thought I didn't have a contract and could have asked for something, I said, you know what, it's gonna come back down, so ride it out, you do the job. You know, ride it out, the money isn't that big of a deal to me, to be honest with you, I mean, yeah, you'd like to have something, which is why I'm mentioning the car, I don't, I don't think it's a fair shake for me to get. Fifty-five cents a mile, when I'm only putting twelve miles a day on it, my car's running for seven hours, I don't know how you deal with it, that's entirely up to you to think about it if you wanna do something, if you don't, whatever. The other thing is, is the cell phone, I got that foot phone, and in all honesty, I'll tell you right now, eighty percent of the time that I'm on that phone is with tree crews, for the town. The other fifteen percent is tree crews for me, and the other five percent is my kids wanting to know if I'm going ice fishing with them, I mean, that's. It's very little usage for, you know, there is no personal usage, I'm really, but the town, I don't know if you're funding phones for everybody else, I don't really want one of those big phones, but some kind of an allowance for, or, you know. That, like a reimbursement would help, but the other thing is, too, is don't forget, I'm retired, so my salary has to fall within the limits that I can make. Now, I can make a lot more than I'm making, and it won't affect my retirement, I don't, I think, when I left, it was supposed to be maybe ten percent of your retirement amount without it affecting your retirement. So I've got four thousand more I could make, that wouldn't affect it, but, you know. I mean, you gotta be fair about everything, that's what I try to be, and if, if, if this tree work passes by the end of June, we're gonna be back on a normal tack, I think, you know.
Well, that's what I was saying, that's what I felt, you know, we were talking a percentage of the extra work covered clerical, I, supervisory work. And then your regular salary is basically the regular, your work, or it could happen years before, you know. If you're saying, well, this one here covers the normal fifty to sixty trees I take care of every year, oh my gosh, it's two hundred more.
Well, you know, if, I mean, if our student population increased threefold, would Hammond be paying the same amount to the district? Not that they'd be paying more, you know. I mean, if we had a fifteen thousand population, Scotty'd be working for the population of the community of five, not. That kind of thing, you know, but, on the other hand, my population's gonna drop again.
That's my point, you're going back to, yeah.
It's not anything. So anyway.
Are you billing against the special revenue account, or are you still on your operating budget? You're billing against the new hundred thousand?
Yes.
You are?
Yeah, I haven't put a bill through yet, but I'm holding them in, oh, yeah, that, I'll be putting one in by Thursday morning, the first one.
Does he have to spend that by the end of the fiscal year?
June thirty.
No. No, just state credit, it's great.
I was, I got an email saying it's gotta be spent by June thirty. I'd have to go look and see who sent it, I can't remember, but there was a deadline on it. I think I may have read it, the max hide in the contract, that's what that, they gave to them. It's part of the state's operating budget, so like that.
Well, you have difficulty doing that?
No, no, it'll get done, yeah.
Oh, so it's just a separate account? Okay, we put it into account in the bill of state?
Yeah.
Well, why can't we, like, you have hired tree service, you have stump grinding, you have wood waste, why, why can't we have a. An expense item for the. Tree ward, clerical?
Expenses, just so you're aware of it, like, occasionally I'll put something through, this week I'm gonna be putting through an expense voucher to reimburse myself for ink cartridges. I've printed these spreadsheets out a million times and I had to order some ink, again, keep in mind, I bought the computer, paid for that, paid for the printer, didn't ask for anything.
Well, where would you put it?
But I just put it under tree warding expenses.
All right.
That's where it goes. And I don't put in, you know, obviously for everything, but those three cartridges were, I think, under thirty-five bucks or something like that, you know?
If you could find them right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, Amazon just had them there the next day. But there's other things, you know, same thing, there's other things that. You know, if you get a, an explicit bill that you know is just for that, then I don't like what they did, Mark gives me a agreement paper, I need it, so, beg one off and then. Another thought is, I think that money does have to be spent by June thirty.
That it is, if you have funds left over that you might lose, could you then, you will have it, it'll be done.
My local appropriations are gone, because the only money sitting in that right now is what the parks has, I don't know what Hamden Land Trust is doing, and I don't care. But they were allowed five thousand, and I know that they had the work done at eighty-five hundred, and they, and they asked about, you know, should I, we'll pitch in the overdraft. You know, but I, I see on the last posting I got, they haven't put anything against it, and as far as I know, I think it was, was it you, Bob, that emailed me about. Parks, trees, or something?
Yes.
Okay, and then I said, I'll be happy to go, you know, sure, you know.
They're interested in it.
But they have to, they have to, you know, make the call and decide which company they want to use, that's, that's their name, not mine. But I mean, that.
But the money's in the.
It's sitting there. So maybe you need to wake them up a little bit and say, spend it, because that money needs to be spent by the end, it's fiscal, so we need to get them to spend that money.
And they also had an issue too, one of the trees they were talking about was next to a brook, that requires a little concomitant therapy too.
Unless the tree disappeared. That's up to you too.
You never know, lightning is gonna strike.
Yeah.
That's a scout project, yeah.
We got something from Pennsylvania.
Have you ever had a budget for tree planting or insect control?
We've, we had it years and years ago, to me, we got plenty of trees in town, I can't even keep up with mortality. If there's trees in a subdivision that were planted by, you know, a developer, and they do fail occasionally, if I, I don't know, I can't even remember when we had tree planting money, but. I've been the tree warden for what, thirty-five years now, so it was a long time ago, and I recommended abolishing it, anybody that's got a house on a subdivision wants to plant a three hundred dollar tree, they can plant their own. And then plant them back on your property, so we don't ever have to worry about it again. Tree wardens can plant municipal funds back twenty feet on the private property, and then that tree becomes the property of the homeowner. But at least it gets us out of the responsibility of taking the tree down in the future, grinding the stump and all of that.
When I was on the planning board, that was Dana's point, like, subdivision, which they always wanted to do for a sales appearance or something. But then you recall some of those where, oh, they wanted it spaced every so far, and your point was like, well, those leaves are gonna be falling on the, the public way, if they're planting them out here, and that way, you have a safety issue as well.
It isn't even, it isn't even that, it's the same thing as people that develop. Tree belts in the center, like on Boston Road between these field law there, they plant these trees, they're ornamental, and they've got about a five-foot grass strip in there, and you hope the tree lives. If it lives, four years later, you gotta cut it down, because branches are hitting the trucks on both sides, it's, it's the same thing as green metal stool, look at the trees they planted on those. On those island areas, you know, I mean, they get bushy and they're out over the road, and it happens all over the place, I mean, I see it, impedant everywhere, trees are all over the road. Which brings me to another point, is that if there's, if I get the tree removals done with the state aid, I think it would be, reading the state contract, I think it would be appropriate. Is, in their eyes as well, is to do trimming of dead trees, dangerous trees that overhang the town road that are private. Now, I put them off the shelf, we've talked about it, but take care of the town trees first, but if we get those done, and I've got money left for trimming. There's some bad limbs hanging over the roads, and you, well, let's say, who would see it, if the Northones are open, I mean, I blended them before you get to Northones. Some big mature oats, and I measured them, they're like a foot beyond the town bounds, so I'm not touching them. But those.
Well, you can, you can, right, because they're over?
Yeah, they're hanging over, and one limb, right, yeah, and there's no place for, I mean, bicycling is a big thing, and there's no place for anybody to get out of that way, there's a bank that's straight up on Jim Smith's house. And then there's wire guardrail on the other side, you can't move, if that limb comes down, if you saw it coming, you couldn't get out of the way. So I would like to, you know, see if you would agree to trim some of these limbs over the road if there's money left. That's one thing, the other thing is, is we haven't done any stump grinding since this epidemic hit, and there's, you know, I wouldn't, I generally don't grind all the stumps, but ones that are in a lawn area of somebody's home and stuff like that. If there was money left, that would come last, I left it in the budget as that, and bumped it up for what probably the new grinding rates are three years later. And if, if I needed it for tree removals for safety, I would spend it on that first. But I'd like to get some of these stumps ground, you know, I, I was thinking of doing one on the common that I took down and then.
Twenty-dollar money, how many stumps can you get done for thirteen?
Not a lot, there's not a lot, there's not a lot of lawn areas either.
Right.
And then you get the most visible ones, you know, like I would do the one on the town common, the one on your lawn, I would skip, but.
Thank you. Do we have a lot of stumps, trees though, that are taken down that impact the roadway? Or you're worried about maybe these roots are, these are trees, they're dead, but they're also.
None of the trees have, you know, have root damage, that damaged the road.
Okay.
One of them was a maple right out here, and when I saw it in the waterway, I went, oh, yeah, ooh, they're gonna have to dig that stump out, and they went under it. I wasn't too happy about that.
Technology.
Yeah.
All right, well, we got some work doing, just to.
So it's, it's basically the same, you know.
I see that, just a salary increase in your, I, I think we should investigate the other thing, you know, I think we maybe missed out, we, well, we can still go with this current one, because maybe we have currently your money.
Either way.
All right, thank you.
You know.
I get to see you.
Yep, me too.
Transfer station budget, where are we there?
Pretty straightforward, one, couple things we had is, we have the request, Bob, is that on there?
Yeah, it is.
Obviously, we have the, the salary increases. The one request we have that's further in things, the fact that Dennis does that as the chief up there, he's also one responsible for the money, things like that, and I think, you know. That's what requests for the step increase, because he, he's the supervisor, but he's paid like the rest, he's graded like the rest, if you will.
Who is?
That's part of that.
Does the budget that they sent or does that reflect that?
No, it does not yet.
These are sort of what, grade one, step five?
Right.
And so we go to what?
Step six.
What about Carl?
Well, Carl, again, you see. Oh, that's because we got one of them. That's longevity.
Okay.
You see, I think, we're going into last year, the contract done.
Yeah.
Yeah, so something to think about, do we go back out a bit, do we assess what we've seen the past three years and go from there?
It is.
You don't have a bag issue at this point, so we're not looking for. Bagged money per se, but I think if you look at this budget here and projected revenues, we don't really have a firm projection yet, and we're probably in the March time for them, you know, close to the town meeting. I would say, based on experience, we probably will be looking at a request, probably in the ten thousand range, like before. You know, this goes back into, Don, you've been up there before, what's our customer base? Are they using Macamore privately, are they using the Nupac privately, those people, and are they coming up with it? Personally, you see the increases, you may know that from other people, our transfer station offers pretty good value at this point. You know.
We still taking in money from recycling?
We are, we get it from recycling, from the merch. We're not talking tens of thousands. We're not talking tens of thousands, Mike.
But we're not paying to have it taken away.
It is running in the black. At this point, the, uh, this is, I want to say preliminary, it's the discussion for the board on the position change. And before we get to the Warren Archopark, we're gonna have a, a good sense of whether that will need a, uh, infusion from the, from the town budget appropriation. If he, if he, if he, if we do Dennis's thing, that would be an additional sixteen, thirty annual.
Raise him to a step two.
Yeah, that's just about. That's correct, and that would be consistent with somebody who's in charge of money basically. I don't think you have any other employee that thinks three.
Not an additional sixteen, right? Seventy-six?
Yes.
I read that one. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm thinking hourly. Yeah, it's a lot more responsibility, yeah.
Which he's actually had for. But that's further on your, more on here, but that's just, that's the background for it. I have a request on the transfer station budget to increase the. Again, this is what we talked about, Don, how's this process going, if you will? I'd like to request a, uh, a grade change classification for the supervisor at the transfer station to be a great.
I've, I've said to all of the. Chair. That there's a form to be filled out.
Yeah.
This came in sort of late and they didn't do it, and I don't think he was, I don't think he came into the meeting, so he's probably not familiar with, he was not familiar with the process. But under the Collins report. The selectmen. Can make any changes in grade. They do it once a year. Prior to the budget.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you have to make the request and make the case for it. Uh, one of, one of the things that I think we should change for next year. Is that, uh, this should be done by January one. So that any changes can be plugged into the budget process as opposed to waiting till the end of the fiscal year, which is what we're doing this year.
True, but again, I think going, echoing what you said there, Bob, this will come from, so it's bigger department head, you will. Not necessarily the employee.
Yeah, right.
So I'm bringing this forward from the Board of Health in charge of the transfer station, I'd like this changed for.
Three, two, step.
Current step.
Current step.
Whatever step is being done for all employees.
Uh, second.
Little favor. Alright, uh, COVID update, COVID booster update. We've got that, Jane, on or something?
This is connecting to audio.
I'm here.
Hey, what's the deal?
We did eighteen people. For booster shots on, on Thursday. Our numbers are fabulous, we're down to nineteen. People that have COVID in the town of Hampden reported to the state.
Increase from over a hundred people.
Yeah, over a hundred, oh, boy, several weeks ago, so it's.
Correct.
That's pretty good, eighteen, that was a bad day too, right? The weather, weather.
It wa, yeah, it was, we're, I think we're doing great.
No, no, the, the month, I think you're talking about the people coming into.
Yeah.
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 Turnout. Is there an opportunity for another one, Jane, coming down the road or?
On the thirteenth, they're having one in Long Meadow. Which includes us and it is for first, second, and booster. From age five and up.
Thirteen, thirteen on Sunday?
Yes. That's when they scheduled it.
Alright, anything else?
No, just everybody keep doing what they're doing because we're doing pretty darn good, I think.
Thanks, Jane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we covered that. Plus Anthony has, he's on now.
He's on, yes. Tony?
Yeah. Sorry about that, yeah, I'm here, I'm just, uh, listening to the Wilbraham meeting as well.
Scott gave us kind of an update before, but I thought he mentioned about highway, was there some, uh? Created the highway radios?
Yep, so, um, Wilbraham, DPW was having an issue with their, their radios, they, they. Were using a system that was outdated and finding replacement parts are few and far between. So I had a radio vendor come up that have push-to-talk, it's all, it's an all-in-one service where you pay a monthly fee. And that includes service, that includes if the radio, uh, or handheld dies, they come and replace it. Uh, Wilberham's used their service department several times since, um, the implementation of the radios, Ham's used it once or twice. So we were able to get a deal with, uh, both highway departments coming on that. Uh, radios would be coming into the dispatch center directly where I don't have to call somebody. On the phone for either community to get them to go somewhere. Especially during plowing when there's an emergency, which we did take a couple of emergency calls from highway department personnel over the radio. Um, so Goose Town had these, uh, push-to-talk radios which were very inexpensive, we don't have to buy anything. Um, they're leased and they're, they include, uh, all the service, if they break, they come out and replace it and. That's the, that's where we've been going or what I've been doing with, uh, with both highway departments, it was just a, a one-two with Wilbraham needed it and I thought. With Hampden's, uh, radio system, they didn't have a repeater, so we wouldn't be able to talk to them in the communication center to any of the Hampden DPW trucks. So that's where this, uh, push-to-talk radios came in, uh, very handy for both, both departments.
So the communication would be just back to the dispatch center?
Yep, so they can talk amongst themselves back at the dispatch center, uh, if they take one of the handheld radios to. Anywhere in the United States, they can talk on the radio system back to a truck or back to us in, uh, in dispatch. I do have, uh, six extra, so if there is a large event in Hampden or Wilbraham and we want to use some radios, we can use these right on the fly. Also, uh, Goose Town will also, um. Support. Radios, extra radios, if we need them for a day or a week in advance, I'll just come and give them to us to use and then, uh, take them back at the, when they're done, but I do have six extra just in case.
But what if the police need to contact the DPW? Do they have to rely to dispatch to get in contact with them or could they communicate through a radio?
Uh, no, they call us and then we call through them, I mean, they can call the foreman on their cell phone, but, uh, since I've started in Wilbraham, that's how we do it. Police are fired, do not contact DPW directly, they all, they go through us, that's how it's been done in Wilbraham, so. Just for continuity for, um, calls for service, if, if we have to contact the highway department, we make a call for service for it. So it can be tracked down if there's a, an issue in the future.
And you guys in Wilbraham are contracted through Goose Town? Or do you use that just?
No, we have no service contract, we, we can use whoever, uh, whoever we want.
Alright. Hey, thanks, Anthony, have a good evening.
Thanks, you too.
Our raise, proposed letter to school committee regarding strategic plan, I sent you a copy. Uh, proposed letter, basically. I, I just want to get us on record as, as having. Talking about their strategic plan because they're gonna get a new superintendent, it just seems to me to make sense that. You don't have a strategic plan and then hire someone new to implement a strategic plan that had no involvement in that, so I just wanted this to reach out to the school committee in that way.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, and I, I think it's important that we stress to our representatives of the school committee that. Hampden wants to be involved in the process, you know, interview process, selection process, yeah.
Well, that's, that's. Okay, I can add that to the bottom a little. Alright?
Listen to that.
Okay. Employee request for upgrades.
We have three and one came in today. Which is not so much, uh, a request for an upgrade, but a request. Uh, to be put on a new position. In the clerk's office presumably. Uh, to be. Uh, put into the system. I, that just came in today, I'll give that, I'll put that on the agenda for next week. But we have, in addition to. What you've just done, uh, for the transfer station attendant, we have two other requests. One is for the planning department assistant. Um, and one is for the building department assistant. This would be a request for grade changes. I assume that's why John is here.
Mister Matthews.
Sorry, I meant parking wreck.
That's your winter, Ben.
Okay, cool, a cold. A little, little too snowy for me also, but that's okay, I keep up with that. That's okay, I'm, I'm living in New England and I got it.
That's your first rodeo.
Yeah, no, it's not mine. I've shovelled a lot of snows, yeah. Um, go ahead, you have some questions or you have some questions?
Give us, give us the pitch.
Okay, um. What, and again, I wasn't, um, as the chairman previously, but. What happened, I believe, when Collins came through, um, and I don't know their contract exactly, what I was told is that. Their contract was to place people in appropriate positions that are already established. So, um, in doing so, the woman that interviewed Joanne, the, our administrative assistant. Um, said to her that we don't, we cannot give you another. Uh, description, job description, okay, because that's not what their. Um, so. The, the judge, my previous, the previous chair, um, discussed it and whatever I spoke to Joanne about it. And, um, that's why I'm here, so what I did was I went online, I did a little query. Um, and basically where there's a town planner, okay, there's an administrative assistant, if you will. Where there's no town planner like we have here, okay? It's what they call the planning, uh, it could be a planning coordinator, called planning zoning coordinator or something to that effect. And basically, you know, towns with planners, you have Wilbraham, you have Munson, North Hampton, Low, uh, Agonon, Belge Town. Um, where they have assistants, okay? But the towns without a planner like us, okay? Um, Wales, Russell, Northfield, Brentfield, as such, um, they have a, they have a planning coordinator. So that planning coordinator would, um. Administerate. Oversee a couple of other people, maybe one other person or two other people or three, whatever, um, in the job, okay? Some of it might be, um, it could be building related, some of these smaller, real small towns, interactive building department. But what it does is they oversee, you know, other people, other, and in, in our town, in Hampden. Joanne's been working, you know, with the, uh, young lady that does the Zoom meetings and also she does, um. We transcribe some of our meeting minutes. Because of the overflow we had with, with meeting minutes, we've needed to have somebody else help us. I don't foresee that going away in the near future. Um, so that's why the planning coordinator, the planning zoning coordinator position.
Will that be like a new title?
It would be a new title, yes. Not, it would be new to tech, to Hampden.
New to Hampden, yeah.
But not new to other cats.
Yeah, yes. And the job description would follow suit with the new title or is it completely the same?
Yeah, this job description, I think, um, yeah, I think she forwarded it, I'm looking at it.
Okay, got it.
Okay, um, I think she forwarded it off and that was, that job description, some of it was from Collins and then it was the additional duties that she had. Um, since I took the position of the chairman, I've been in, in town more. Uh, in, 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 when I say town, in town all more and, um, Joanne, I can see where she's answered a lot of questions. From. Applicants, engineers, lawyers, you know, the other day she, um, I'll give you an example. Uh, there was a history question of, you know, uh. Pre-existing legal not-conforming laws. And she went through, you know, the research, did all the research and she came back with the answer for that lawyer. So those are things that, uh, that are out of a, like clerk's position more towards a, um, coordinator position. So she needs to know that, she knows that, needs to know how to find that history, go through and, uh, relay it back to somebody.
Where would this, where would we end up on the?
She, she's presently in grade four, she'd go to, I'm looking for her to go to a grade five and no change in monetary.
What's her step?
Grade, grade four.
Grade four, step?
No, present. And, well, I'm sorry, grade four, um, step six.
So you're looking for a five-six?
It would be five-six.
And whatever rate that is.
No, no change.
Well, I know there's a scale inside the thing, but does the five-six match for four-six and not where there'd be no change?
Right now, I'm, I'm not sure, um.
It's a step every other year.
Yeah.
And even though you're talking about a different title. We're on a grade system now.
Right.
And so what you just said at the end, go from a grade four to a grade five is really what the selectmen would be eventually voting on.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, that's why I'm saying.
And, and the step system, uh, would just depend on where, but when, when she got her last step.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's just longevity, but I mean.
Yeah, that's longevity.
Next year, the, um, the step would stay the same in the grade. The money, the monetary, the money maker up or the grade maker up, again, um.
No, not the grade, the step goes up. Step goes up.
I'm sorry, the step goes up, the grade stays the same.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, but if you're looking for a grade change this year, unless there's. And I don't know where the Collins report is on here, I know there's a range within every grade step. But hard to believe the overlap would work out.
There is an overlap.
Enough where.
She wasn't, she wasn't looking for any more money. I just, I just came back, I just went to do the budget with her.
Mm-hmm.
And I went downstairs.
Five dollars.
We talked, five dollars, you know, okay. So.
It's like a five-dollar difference from a four-six or a five-six.
Five bucks for the year then?
Yeah, the hourly rate.
The hourly is?
So it's right there, it's four-six.
What's the hourly rate?
Twenty-four, thirty-five currently.
And what was the?
Twenty-nine, twenty-two.
Right, but in the Collins report, I thought it had rate, or that was when they surveyed towns, they had like, oh, this went from a twenty-four, twenty-nine dollars.
He's talking. I'm looking at the grade step, but calculation thing. But yeah, yeah, I understand.
Aligns with the step system.
Right.
So you say twenty-four to twenty-nine, that would be like a step three to a step.
Right, because that gave us that rationale, I think it's still, it's still, if you go to a five-six, it's still gonna require monetary change.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Sure.
Then I'll have to go back to advisory. It's happening this year, for next year, I'm saying, you know, you're gonna have this just a year.
Now, I go back to, and John, you may recall, well, you know, the table report, if you will, back the last time we did this. No, no, only because paper and Hand Brothers offices, they had a book of three hundred different positions. Of which the town used twenty-something of.
Three, four.
But they probably had something, just to talk to you, just because Collins didn't label it that, they probably had a job description for that type of position.
They can listen to Joanne, Joanne tried to revise the description that they gave her, that was, that was everybody's, you know, charge. And they would not accept the change.
They tried to chickenhole everyone.
Yes, very much so.
So there's two steps here, John, as I see it, Bob, same thing. First, the selectmen have to approve the request for a grade change.
Great change.
Then you go back to advisory, tell them, well.
Right.
Actually, you're back at Dell Mall, since this is the grade, this is the budget.
Yes.
And just, you know, not so big word on it, it's kinda like.
Last year, we, we went to the town meeting for grade changes, but that's not the way the system should work.
Okay.
So this year, I've said to the staff and to the department heads, this is a decision for the board of selected grade changes.
Yes.
Step changes are basically reflect your longevity.
So, okay.
But there will be, if you go from grade to grade, uh, the, the income increases, the wage, the wage increases.
I, I, and again. I, and again, I don't know enough about it, I'm kind of picking it up in the middle, I'm sorry that I'm not that well versed.
All right. Now, is she gonna do Zoom meetings?
When you say we're doing them now, she has, she coordinates.
So Molly does them, right?
Yes, she coordinates Molly, because she's, again, I know they're being recorded, but.
What, what happens if Molly can't do it, then, then you rely on Bob or?
Yeah, we rely on Bob or John.
Or John or.
Here's your, here's your range chart. The range she rests with. I just pulled it up.
I mean, I.
Average.
Having been involved and understand exactly where you're coming from. But I'd like to see if it's possible, you could find that job description, though, consistent with the request of change, if you will. Like, look, look, here's this description that Collins has for a person that actually is doing everything that this person's currently doing. And this is, instead of them pigeonholing this position down to something less, that they should have picked off the chart here.
And that was the issue that they had, that, I believe that's the issue, again, I'm not, I wasn't involved with it. Collins didn't have anything. And so they were unwilling to, to make, to make that change. It was, I don't think.
Because you're right, this is a, and having gone to the state planning board meetings and stuff like that, this is very consistent with what other towns have as a role, as a person.
Yeah, I mean, you know, like you said, I looked it up. And the towns with planners, they all have assistants, because they have a planner. But a town without a planner, they have a coordinator.
Yeah, have you reached out to any of those towns to see what their salaries are or anything like that?
You know, you know, like Long Metal, it's a, it's a, it's a union job, so.
A lot of those towns there.
Yeah, so, I, I didn't use them.
This is gonna, I think, continue to be an issue for the town and other towns. Twenty-five years ago, an administrative assistant could almost work interchangeably, with a little bit of training, among the departments. But now, the work is becoming specialized, requiring more and more training and skill, and so.
Concom, concom's a perfect example.
Yeah, you can't move from one department to the other and be an administrative assistant. They're becoming very specialized, skilled in the job.
Yeah, and, and, and I see it, you know, now that I, you know, down there a little bit more. Right, it's now become more and more specialized, which.
You say you already met with advisory?
I did, just before this meeting, yeah, but I, I can always.
But you're, you're presenting the budget as.
As my report. Yeah, and, and again, you know, I'd be happy with a grade change, and I think Joanne would too, and then we can, we can launch that next, next year, with a salary change. I know you, you're, you're, whatever.
No, but it's automatic, John, automatic.
I think you're stuck, you're stuck with the salary change.
If, if we go to a higher grade, at the same step, six, the, the wage is higher.
I see, it's solid.
So it's kind of automatic, it's automatic.
Everybody's gonna fall off the chart if we don't do that.
All right, what do you want to do?
What was advisory's recommendation, did they give you one?
I didn't tell them, because I didn't know the outcome here, okay? They were fine with what's proposed, okay?
And the budget as proposed was before the stepping piece?
Correct, it was present, as, as she was presenting.
Again, having been involved, I mean, you probably know some from the other time document, you may remember John Pierce Hall from Wilbraham. That really, the work that this person does is one step below.
Yeah.
You know.
She had spoken.
Talked every group, just.
Joanne had spoken to John last, before he retired, and John has also said that your position is really a planning and zoning coordinator.
And should she start at step one with grade five, or jumping right into step six, is that because of tenure?
Tenure.
All right, make a decision.
I'll take, I'll make a motion to grant the request with planning board for a grade change.
Title change. I'll second that.
Favor. Just so I understand, you voted a grade change?
Yeah.
Okay, and a title change, nevertheless, the grade change is what's important.
The title change is what necessitates the grade change.
Right.
Title change also.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
That's your own research, John, that was well done. That was well done in that request.
Next, and we have one more for Park and Rec.
Thanks, John, see you.
This is the form, Kristen filled out the form that we've established. This is the form, this is the form that, anyone on the staff who wants a grade change should use.
Park and Rec.
Totally one drive. Park and Rec.
All right, give us the pitch.
So, I don't know much about the history of the Collins report either. When looking at it.
The beauty of it.
It didn't really seem to match what Kristen was doing.
Does Kristen actually do the criminal offender record stuff herself?
She was gathering it, and I just learned that she gives it to Bob now, but she was at one time doing it.
I do, I do the court checks.
And she gets it.
One of the things that I think we should talk about is devolving that back. Because there are quite a few court checks, she comes in with stack.
Why did, why did? Pretty much every single activity.
Why did you take it over?
I, I didn't do it voluntarily, I thought that she, that there were some issues.
She has to get some kind of state.
You know, you have, you have to be approved.
She's all certified.
Yeah, she went.
She is. So we had all the, she was doing all the core issues, classifying, and we have to save them for a week. It's, it's, it's a few years that we save them, actually, it might be perpetually, I'm not sure, but, um, she was doing all those, and we have them all saved. What is, what is Kristen's current grade and stuff?
Three, two.
Yeah.
Three, two? So the unique part of this position right here, sorry.
No, you're fine.
The, the unique part of this position right here is that it's, it's unlike a lot of different areas, so if the Collins report looks at, can look at a park and rec department, there's usually multiple layers within it, it's a director, assistant, maybe even other part-timers. With him in park and recs, because of the, the, the lack of need of multiple layers in here, we have one person, we have one person doing everything. She's doing, you know, she was doing the court checks, I'm sure she will be doing that again. She's doing a lot of the scheduling, she's doing a lot of the day-to-day activities without any direct supervision. We're all, we have, we're like, five person elected board that all have their jobs. But, and over the course of the three years that she's been on here, she's steadily becoming more and more comfortable, obviously, you know, you, you walk into a position, especially when it's a vacant position, where you're not learning from a previous person, she had to learn everything herself. She did a very good job of understanding what she needed to do and how she needed to do it, and how to maintain the programs that we have, without, with very little hiccups throughout the course of it. And that, I think, is, is why that position is so unique, is that there is, you know, we, we call her administrative assistant, but she's not really an assistant to anybody. She's really the office manager, or we had her, we had the other title for the other position, was assistant director, but we never had a director. So we, we didn't know exactly how to classify the position, and then the Collins report came back as, I believe it was park and rec department clerk or department assistant. And she is the department, and she's the face of the town of Hamden in the park and rec. And I think the, the because of the uniqueness of her position, and because of the responsibility that she has, ensuring and enabling that the park and rec programs are running on a consistent basis, she is able to, to, again, pivot and redirect where she needs to, and then make sure that, and everything is running smooth. If she does run into any kind of situation, which is, is a rarity, that she has the ability to look at who she needs to talk to and find the answer for what she's doing. And that's, again, part of that position, where it's, you know, she's not just a department clerk, where she can reach out to her boss to have go do it. She's the one who does it, that's someone in the planning, she does the research, she does the findings for what needs to be done. And for, for a lot of those reasons, you know, we believe that she was graded incorrectly from the Collins report. Does she do all the scheduling for activities and stuff?
She does.
Sports programs, stuff like that?
She does.
Team.
If you go back to the nineties, and Don, you recall this, the town voted to bring in a rec director at that point, I think it was, um, Jay Benelison.
Yes.
And we have Peter Murray and Cindy Coughlin, and, and actually, I think Jay actually had an assistant at that time, support, you know? And it wasn't until the, the great lawyer, Ron Call, you know, he axed him in oh-five, you know? You know, we lost that, that position. But at that point, that department was full-on doing everything, you know, it was running the camp, running the programs, coordinating for adult programs as well. And now we're doing the same thing, but back to a clerical level. And again, there's a fairness aspect to it. If the town acknowledged twenty years ago that this was a job that required almost a two-man office, then why have they taken care of it now?
Is Kristen gonna have enough hours to handle the workload that she's got?
So, that is.
And.
Should be twenty-eight, how about?
It should be a twenty-eight.
Is that what she works, is twenty-eight? Yeah, so, so she works, she works twenty-four in the office, day-to-day, Monday to Thursday, eight to, eight to two. The, some of the things that aren't on there that, that I think she put on, what is, I didn't, I didn't see this, so I would have told her, you know, she's getting phone calls on Fridays, Red Runner or different. She's getting phone calls, hey, I can't work, is there someone else that, that can work for us? And, and she is still working to try to do it, I, I don't, I think she put in her hours as what she is in the office. She also didn't include the time that she's at.
That dovetails into my F D here, how would you feel about that being a five-day-a-week job? You think there's a need for it, especially when you have so many weekend activities that change up right to the end?
So one of the things that we talked about, if we knew we didn't have enough time to come back and articulated intelligently our thoughts, but we, we are talking about, do we need to get this into a full-time position? Or keep Kristen as it, as her regular position, maybe, maybe adding a Friday to it, but also having someone that can expand the breadth of the programs that we run from a different capacity? Because if Kristen is unable to, to work those extra hours, is it that, look for somebody else? Or do we look to, to get a supplement to that, because Kristen really does do a good job, and she's great with the people. The, the number of compliments that personally I've heard about her interaction with them is phenomenal. And, and again, it, it's really good to hear that from, from people in the community, because, you know, as elected person, why? People are being happy when they talk to you. But again, you know, there's, there's just a really solid support for, for Kristen, what she does. So some of our, our last thoughts, our last meeting was, is this something that we look to, I'm not even sure Kristen would want to, to do more hours or not? I mean, that's something we would, would approach her later, but we, we talked about, how do we expand? You know, we're, we're maintaining right now, but how do we expand? We added skiing this year, we had a volunteer that did a whole lot, working with, working with Kristen, to, to establish a new program, so we started thinking, how do we get new programs? But if Kristen's capacity is at the limit right now, without what we have now, how do we, how do we continue to get some?
But it goes back to, and I think, you know, like I said, experience, Friday was always that flurry of phone calls, hey, we got the game on Saturday, hey, it's the Jim Holt, hey, he's doing this. Friday was an incredibly busy day, and she's not there, but she answers the phone, because she's a good person, you answer the phone, Carrie answers the phone.
So there's sort of a thing, with the office being empty on Friday, I don't know how comfortable she or I would feel, or Carrie would feel, her being in the office.
No, no, I'm saying, we're talking about, we're discussing the town hall, that's, that's an overall discussion.
Yep.
What are we looking for?
So we're looking, our doing is looking at, moving from a three to a four.
Grade change.
Right now, let's bring her up to the admin assistants of, I hate to say it, you know, even less than some of your other admin assistants are. And look at her responsibility, and again, this is another person dealing with cash, too, right?
Absolutely.
Money, et cetera, and background checks.
She's got a lot of confidential information, because she also has the medical records of all the kids.
What are you looking to raise her to?
Grade four.
Four-two. Grade four step two, so one.
That she no longer does work for the advisory committee.
Correct.
She was doing some staff work for them.
Yeah. So COVID, COVID created some challenges there, I don't know if that would, if that is gonna change going forward, but, you know, now she's able to get back into our meetings and everything.
One thing, this goes back to, to throw the speaker application, getting the job descriptions re, I want to say, is that something we're charged now? Do we coordinate with Collins and have them rewrite it, or is it Bob's theory right now going forward?
I think that for the next seven to ten years, that, that would be an internal responsibility, probably the town administrator, to hear requests from individuals who say, my job has changed. The job description that I had when, when Collins was here has changed significantly, and I have new responsibilities. And then I would think that first step would be for me to evaluate that and then bring it to the board for any change in grade. We, we don't even need to talk about steps, steps really affect longevity, we're talking about grade levels.
I look at the employees, the number of employees in town that have, let's go back to the core thing, core certification, the town administrator, the police chief, and park and rec. You know, that's a huge responsibility, when we started doing that type of thing back in the nineties, it took a lot of work to get somebody, A, just to be willing to have that responsibility. And we're not even talking story here, we're just talking core at this point. So I think this is something that should be reflected in their job.
You see a lot of confidential information.
Right.
So what would her classification name change? Right now, it's what, Parks and Rec assistant?
Administrative assistant, is what it is now.
People, what it is now for us or what it is for Collins? No, no, for, for Kristen, I mean, if you want to have a title change, right, and a job description change.
The titles are associated with the grades.
Admin assistant out of four is not unusual.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, if we need, if we need to look at a title change, and again, it's, to me, those are just words, her, her responsibilities aren't gonna change. We can, we can get any title we want, but if, if it doesn't, if it affects what the grade is, then we can really change.
The title is, is linked with the grade, so raise her the grade, and under the Collins report, she gets a different title.
Only admin assistant in the Collins report that's not a four.
Not four.
I'm saying she must be the only.
Right.
So she's not listed as an admin assistant.
She was listed as a clerk of department.
That's right, she, she would go to an admin assistant.
Correct, and so, and the other thing too is, is, you know, she was interviewed during this Collins report, then she didn't have, she, if she was interviewed back then, that was two years ago, two and a half years ago, for the Collins report, that was her six, she was in your six months in dealing with the COVID situation. So her ability to articulate what her true responsibilities were, if she was interviewed, which I'm not sure she was or not, she would not have been able to, to understand the full breadth of everything that she has to do. And now she, and now, as you can see here, she can definitely articulate what her responsibilities are, and, and I'm sure they're gonna continue.
You, you have me at home.
I used to supervise five hundred and fifty people, five hundred and forty-nine couldn't tell me what their job responsibilities are.
Yeah, I mean, I'm pretty passionate about this, I think it's long, long overdue, and I, I bear the burden of.
So I make a motion to endorse the Park and Rec's request for a grade change for their administrative assistant to a grade four.
Step two.
Will they, will they appropriate that?
Yeah, second.
Favor.
Aye, aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, doing a good job over there. All right, uh, let's, can we skip, can we skip, can we skip finally, you'll play again?
Yes, yes, for two reasons. Number one, you want to skip it. Number one, you'd like to skip it. Number two, I did ask the staff. That, I said, here's your last chance to comment on this before we make it official. And I just received from the assessors, a whole page worth of suggestions and changes. So I want to have a chance to go back and do that.
Busy assessment.
Okay, good. Let's get building the assessment you have, the new update you have. I just gave it to you tonight.
Okay.
You can skip that as well because you can take time to read it. It's quite a few pages.
Okay.
And you could also skip the water agreements. I had them out today. I haven't completed them. I'm just going to add a paragraph. And take them to the individuals, send them to the individuals.
Well, the one thing I'd like to do, and I think this came up in the past week, is about the water testing. And I want to moderate that to basically, the testing that's done, whatever, is what is done for the scenic valley water supply.
And that's, that's a state report.
And that's a state requirement. So, because it's a public waters of price four, like whatever it is, these are tests that are required.
Yeah.
And the other ones, like I said, we were checking for things before because it was here, the salt pile. That's why those tests were on there. This is a totally different supply. So I think the, the agreements and Ham brought this up before, should be moderated to reflect the scenic valley testing, if you will.
And so we're going to have two changes that we're going to have.
But still, we can get them once a year or whatever. You guys test once a year?
Yes.
Great. Everyone get to copy.
So the other change is, is still going to be that the arrangement lasts for the current order.
Right.
Right. Tip information, that's just.
I just gave it to you because.
Could I just ask a question about, we skipped over the town assessment. I sat here, I waited till we got to that, so we could ask a question. So.
Building a something.
Last week you talked about, you talked about the elevator and improvements are being made and, and state funding. If, if I'm at my house and I want somebody from the state or someone from the electric company to come in and do a, a review of my house and tell me my windows are leaking or whatever. The state wants to have programs like that. I guess my question is, are we, as a town, for this building or for any municipal upgrades, are we, are we chasing all of the state funding that we can? I mean, is there?
Yes.
Are there, I know that's your job. I'm not, I'm only asking because I, I don't.
Right. There's, there's, there's a two-step process now for funding for excessive, making the building accessible. Number one, you have to have a town-wide plan that is acceptable to the state office of disabilities. That's what we're trying to do here. The, the plan that we have from two thousand seventeen focuses on this building. But we have to make sure that the plan is town-wide, even though there's not much work to do town-wide, because we know where we are. Nevertheless, town-wide plan, once you have a town-wide plan accepted, then you are eligible annually for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state office of disabilities to make accessibility improvements. And so the, the goal here would be to get the plan approved and probably apply for up to two fifty to support the cost of an elevator. And then after that, other accessibility issues. And in addition that we didn't get, uh, well, we, we did to some extent. In addition, we're looking to update the condition of the building and the cost of making improvements in the building that enable it to last for another thirty or fifty years. Addressing issues with the foundation, with the windows upstairs and so forth. And the, this proposal would give us a cost for that. But the town meeting and the selectmen can't make any decisions about what to do here unless we know how much it's going to cost.
So that second part about the upgrades to the building foundation, windows, roof, whatever it might be, you have a plan, you have a, a program of funding from the state that you'd be able to access and, and help with that.
The answer is, as far as investing in capital improvements here, answer with that would be no at this point. Capital improvements to buildings, still something that towns have to fund themselves, which is frankly what we're doing with the highway garage. And eventually with the fire station and then perhaps with the senior center.
So if you looked at the original report back in seventeen, there was an estimate anywhere from five to six hundred thousand dollars in upgrade slash improvements here. Which potentially included ADA accessibility like.
That was just ADA. That was just ADA.
No, no, it's, it's capital too.
But the wall will fall in, if you press those tiles there, they will go like this because they're falling in. The windows leak. The cellar leaks. All those things were part of the upgrade cost. As Bob says, as Bob says, some of that might be offset by the fact that we're doing accessibility, the state will pay for part of that. But they're not going to pay to fix the bricks on the outside. They're not, they say, you own the house, you keep the house in good repair. Is that sound right, Bob?
I think so.
Yeah. So at that point then, when we get the new assessment, as Wendell said, prices are going up. Yeah, they'll make you, okay, well, by golly, it might be three hundred for the elevator, which we'll pay for. Five hundred to fix the place, which you paid for. And then it's a decision of the town, what do you want to do?
So there's no environmentally friendly fund that you can access that gives you state money, federal money that allows you to do that? I mean, I'm asking because I guess.
Bob is, Bob is pretty much the guru of the brand.
Not, not at this time, although the state is in a strong financial position. And for all we know, the governor may come out with something that would provide a level of subsidy for capital improvements for cities and towns. But we don't have any now at this point.
Thank you.
You could be chairman of that committee though, Pat. Pat, you could be chairman of that committee though, I will say.
No, I had that scout thing for fourteen years. I make the story that I've done a lot of bad things in my life in my twenties. And I get to the firm of the gates and they go, ooh, Richard Brown, oh man, hold me a minute. You did that thing with the scouts and him for fourteen years, I'll watch you. That's mine. That's my ticket.
Very.
Thank you.
Tip, tip information, it's just. I just gave that to you to show you that there are towns in our region that are getting significant federal boxes. One-day liquor license for the senior center.
Yeah, Becky asked me to bring that forward. Basically, we've done it in the past, you know, how wildly crazy they get at paint and sip. They sip, they paint. Bob Ross will not be there this time, but.
Are they going to have an ax throwing one?
Not now, but thank you for the suggestion. Yeah. I think they have to have the target pretty close though. But anyhow, so it's, uh.
Okay, so, so a motion to one-day license, waive the fee.
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Selectment reports?
None at this time.
Town administrator, I get it.
Okay, I've got it. Well, we're supposed to have a strategic planning meeting next week. You get to see where that goes.
Okay. Town administrator report.
Okay, uh, we are moving ahead with a performance evaluation for the highway superintendent. Uh, I have a two-step evaluation system. First of all, the department evaluate, the department head evaluates himself. And then secondly, town administrator completes the, the evaluation form. Mark has it and whenever he gets it back, I think probably for next week, we should have, we should have that. We now have three documents. This all started out looking at the employee handbook and realizing that the town is trying to upgrade its H R program. And so we're still in the process of making some modifications to the employee handbook beyond adding the new language for health insurance. Uh, I thought that a, a, after a quick read, what the assessors submitted tonight was very worthwhile. Secondly, boards and committees have received their copy of the, of the board committee handbook, which basically shows them how to.
Has everyone completed the ethics and training, stuff like that, including new officials?
Uh, I'm not aware that they have, but that's really the clerk.
Is it even, just ask her if she's got, she's got that nice new book, she can put a check mark next to her.
Okay, check on that. Yeah, make a note on it, please. And then lastly, I have a, we have completed, we think, although it changes regularly. The, um, a, a large file which lists all boards, all committees, all members, their terms, as well as all town employees and whether they're elected or appointed and so forth.
I just got, I just got confirmation today, so I'll have that.
Yes.
Associates.
I'll send, I'll send the selectmen a copy of it to take a look at. Uh, but, but a lot of time was going into that and I think that's, you know, that it's a worthwhile endeavor to keep it up to date. ARPA, uh, the final rule from the Department of the Treasury was released. Hampton is going to receive one million five hundred and eighty-four dollars and five hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The final rule is a hundred and fifty-one pages. If you have trouble sleeping at night, it's well, well worth taking up. What is important is that the treasury has made a change since the interim rule was released in November and the most recent final rule. And that is, every community, regardless of how much money they're going to receive, can choose a so-called standard allowance of up to ten million dollars for revenue loss, no questions asked. So we will apply for the entire amount, which will then give the town revenue that can be programmed however the town chooses. There are some areas that you have to avoid. You can't use it to pay for pensions. Uh, you, you can use it for capital improvements, mostly, although there's a little flexibility there. And you can't use it for retirement. But other than that, for so-called government services, you can use those funds as you choose. We're spending, we've spent in the range of five hundred on the water project. We had a couple of change orders, but it's done. And so we have a.
Well, we even covered something because we haven't spent for the, there's resurfacing in the stream.
Right.
That will be a bill.
Yeah, I don't, actually, I was looking around today for a bill, uh, from the contractor. I, I couldn't find one. So I don't think we have a final bill for that.
We're not going.
Yeah.
When they're paying for the surface of the spring, yeah.
Right. Potential projects, I just put, put these down as potentials. Culverts, premium pay for emergency responders. We can do the sidewalk on Allen and Summers Road. I did get an estimate and that's the number. Uh, the highway department would no doubt be able to come up with some culverts that ought to be, and other projects that ought to be addressed. Broadband, uh, I think perhaps we'll end up spending some of the money for broadband. But the infrastructure legislation has a lot of money for broadband. So I think the base of our broadband expenditures will come from the new federal infrastructure legislation.
Do we have a timeline on that?
Uh, applications are starting to go in now. So what you have, unlike ARPA where they just give you the money and you put it in the bank. And then you have to submit, uh, uh, your receipts and so forth after you make the expenditure. Infrastructure legislation is the, is the standard way where you have to apply and justify your request. And then lastly, we could use it for design for a tip project. As you see, we did contact Architecture E L and got their update. This is the second proposal that they've made. I've got the water agreements. I'll be working on those. The governor has released its seventy-three fiscal twenty-three budget. Local aid for Hampden will increase from eight hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars to eight seventeen, three seventy-seven. So we're getting sixteen thousand approximately in new money from the state. This is general government money. Uh, Berim of Entree was here today. I've been pressing him to set up the electronic calendar. Uh, he didn't have time to do it today. He's coming back next week with a commitment to do it. The most recent tip program is in the packet and we have done extensive research on microphones to improve the audio here. And we have found a solution, uh, which would put an individual mic in front of each of you. Uh, and these are, these little mics come with two jacks. So I would connect mine with the, the, uh, the, the computer. Put a jack in there, give it to you. This one has a jack, extends to you and to you, and go eight around the table. I think that'll solve the problem.
Are these the ones from Zoom recommended?
Yes, they are the top recommended from Zoom.
I just want to say, I think it's going to create problems because you guys bring everything.
Yeah, I'm going to have to. So timeline we're going.
You're going to start passing those again.
So that's, that's concludes.
All right, uh. We're going to go into collective, we're going to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining or contract negotiations regarding the highway superintendent, the highway union. I'm not going to delete the tree ward, I guess, and town administrator. And not, not return to, uh, session, open session. Karen, like make motions, go into executive session with this, uh, bargaining and litigation because open discussion would, would disadvantageous. Without a shared open session for the reasons elucidated by the.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
John. I'll, I. I don't think so. You're not coming today, are you? No one's coming today.